I'm going to call this meeting of the UHS Number Six Board Meeting Order at 7:01. I would accept nomination for the election of the Board Chair. And now, when they Robert Woodward.
No one said that. Sean, no, you didn't.
Any other nominations, nominations? Seeing none, and vote all in favor of Robert Woodward as Chair of the UHS Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are opposed or extensions? Okay, turn the meeting over and the panel.
That was bad.
No speech?
I had a platform prepared. This is not necessary. Chicken in every pot and all that kind of stuff. Okay, well, thank you. And we look forward to another good year. I would like to introduce to everyone right off the bat, our newest board member at the end of the table, representing Putney, Pat McMahon. You like to go by Pat.
Yes, please.
I never knew your name was Kevin.
Not too many people do.
My first name is not common knowledge either. And Pat represents the great community of Putney. We look forward to having you part of the group and I think you'll enjoy it. We're pretty smooth running operation most of the time and it's congenial. Have some good times and get some work done. Okay, so, I just want, in case people were wondering who was sitting over at the other side there. The next would be nominations for the election of Board Vice Chair. Are there nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ricky Diggs.
Okay. Is there a Board Vice Chair? Are there? Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, would you please vote to elect Ricky as Vice Chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed or extensions? Seeing none, congratulations. Next, Board Clerk. Any nominations for Board Clerk?
To nominate Barton.
Second. Okay, get that.
Yeah, Ricky.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay. Not all in favor of electing Ruth as Board Clerk? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Okay. And it is done. Nomination of three SCSU voting members.
The current members are Ruth, Ricky, and was Melanie, Bob, you and Alton.
Okay.
It was me. I've been on the ESU for a while.
It wasn't ESU?
Yeah.
A lot of people confuse us.
All the time. A name that starts with an R. Okay, twelve, and you want three voting members, am I correct? Okay. Is there other nominations? We can start with the first, the two that are already on it if they're willing to serve, if somebody would like to nominate them.
I nominate Russ and Ruth.
Okay. Any other nominations? About the third?
Oh, you want to nominate a third person?
Yeah.
I nominate that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The, it's part of the Supervisory Union Board and representatives from all the boards and meets what every quarterly and moves around from Putney to Dumbarton to Radburl to Burnham, all around. So, not too much heavy lifting, but appreciate your help on that. Okay, any other nominations? If not, will you vote to select the Board as nominated?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Seeing none. We have three representatives to the SCSU pre-voting members. And I will be willing to continue to serve as alternate if that's wished. Does that need to be voted on? Probably not.
It should be.
I move Bob Woodward's alternate to the ESU Board.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, call in favor.
Aye.
And I would just say that, I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't know if I wrote that up. Go with your man. If, if on a particular date, one of the Board Members can't make it, then typically you'll know ahead of time, like at a meeting like this, and if you know there's a conflict, you can have somebody else stand in.
Yeah, if they're, asked in the past, if they're, if you know you can't come to a meeting because they need the alternate, so if I can run it for it, and if I can't attend, we'll ask somebody else to be the alternate. Okay. Established meeting days and times. For many years, ever since I can remember, we met on the first and third Mondays of the month. Unless that happens to be a holiday, we move it around and occasionally, usually once in the summer and once after our annual meeting, we may skip the second meeting of the month, but generally first and third Mondays. Everybody's pretty used to that and that's still fine with administrators. So, that's would be our established meeting days and time officially. Board Committees. Just briefly, did everybody get one of these sent to them? The committee listing. All right, well, I just, I'm not always sure if it's getting into whatever, but basically, our standing committees, Finance, TCC, Planning Policy, BAMS, and WRCC. With Melanie no longer on the Board, she was on Planning Policy and the WRCC Board. And I talked with Pat last night and he indicated a willingness to step into those two positions. And other than that, everybody already has appropriate positions, hopefully that they're comfortable with. If there is anybody that definitely wants to make a change, we can talk about that. Otherwise, I think we have Finance, Ruth, Mike, once Mike is back in the fold, and myself and Sean. Planning Policy would be Lori, Ricky, Pat, and Ian. TCC would be Ruth, Ricky, Russ, Sean, and Ian, same group. BAMS would be Lori, Mike, Ricky as Chair. Ricky also chairs the TCC, by the way. BAMS is Lori, Mike, Ricky as Chair, Russ as, we have an alternate on that, and Sean. Have you, you, you normally go to those meetings, right?
Uh, no, probably a fair amount of time.
Okay.
Occasionally with that issue of having a quorum, especially in the summertime, so we're having us as an alternate so that we had a quorum for summer rules.
Right, okay.
It's why that happened. Yeah, or this morning, because it was something that related to something I brought up, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if we're all comfortable with that, and certainly I am, let's see, I did Planning Policy, right? WRCC would be Ruth, myself, and Pat. And then we've already elected our voting members. And then negotiations, WSESU certified myself and classified as Ricky. So, we will put together a new updated listing with everyone's name on it and around. Okay, Board Committees. So, we move on to the Clerk's Report. And the first item of business under the Clerk's Report is approval of the minutes of March 2nd.
Move the minutes to March 2nd as presented.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Pass this run, you can check your contact information.
Okay. Okay. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of March 2nd? If not, all in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or extensions?
Abstentions.
Reasonable fear of abstain. Okay. Was there another extension?
Ian.
Ian, okay. All right. That, that's fine. Okay, the minutes of March 2nd are approved. Are there any communications? Okay, anything else for the Clerk's Report? Okay, we'll move on to recognition of groups and/or individual visitors. And we have two visitors in the back. Michelle Wood and Scott Noran, to talk to us about, let me guess, science.
That's right. Next Generation Science Standards and our development of our new course for the ninth grade, Next Generation Earth and Space Science. And if we're able to set up the projector, I'm happy to share a slideshow, but we also have a handout that might be useful to reference during our presentation, which I promise will be briefer than it looks like to me.
So, I believe that this PowerPoint is also going to be shared with you, and if not, if you have questions or you access, please go through the email.
No, just that.
Either one of us. So, we're here to talk about two different things this evening. One is the Next Generation Science Standards, which are the standards that have been adopted by the state of Vermont and now drive science education in the WSESU district. So, it is our new curriculum guide for students K-12. And I, you know, this quote is actually worth pulling together because it says really everything about why this work was done. "The framework is designed to help realize a vision for education in the sciences and engineering in which students over multiple years actively engage in scientific and engineering practices and apply cross-cutting concepts in order to deepen their understanding of the core ideas of science and to prepare them for futures either as citizens understanding science or individuals who may want to pursue science as a career." And it came out of the recognition that the last time science standards had been written had been 15 years prior to 2011. So, at that time, 26 states selected representatives to go ahead and write a new guide to drive science education in the United States that focused on three areas: practices, content, and cross-cutting concepts. The shifts that are represented by the Next Generation Science Standards are relevant to us, however, I would say many of these practices were held as values by Grover Road Union High School and I think in the WSESU district to begin with. But intentionally, we wanted to make sure that the new standards driving science education reflected real-world practice and used practices and cross-cutting concepts in all sciences so that students would have an opportunity to revisit integrated ideas in more than one place as they spiral through their science education. The shift includes science concepts that are built intentionally and coherently across the K-12 experience and focus on deeper understanding rather than a broad understanding. So, rather than having a lot of general knowledge, students are invited and given access to opportunities to learning concepts in a deeper way. A really big factor for the Next Generation Science Standards is the integration of science and engineering practices. And engineering for the purpose of our standards is really about using some basic processes, including modeling, rather than relying on hypotheses-based science alone. And the beautiful thing is this work was done as Common Core work was being completed and so the Next Generation Science Standards committed to being aligned with English Language Arts and Math Common Core standards. The Next Generation Science Standards divides science education into four domains: physical science, life science, earth and space science, engineering, technology, and application of those things. And in our plan, we had a long discussion as a department and we also ultimately were able to talk with BAMS teachers as well, and we came up with a plan to replace IPF of Next Generation Earth and Space Science as the first science experience students have entering the UHS. That plan is in progress. The department is currently working on understanding-by-design curriculum maps for that class and those are nearly finished and we're going to begin looking at building learning opportunities for students in order to access those standards. And one of the reasons I asked Scott Noran to join me this evening is because he has been our Earth and Space Science teacher for a really long time and he's great in that position. He also has a really good understanding of Next Generation Science Standards and curriculum writing and he has almost single-handedly written templates for us for every one of our PLC meetings in order to modify them. So, I made for some questions to Scott as they come up. My next step will be to revise biology as needed. That course is already pretty well-aligned with Next Generation Science Standards. And then we will construct a third science that will blend physics and chemistry in a Next Generation Physics and Chemistry sort of course, and we'll call that Physical Science. Electives will continue to provide standards-based opportunities and prepare students for college and career in the sciences, and that will be ongoing as it always has been. Students who wish to specialize in the sciences will split their third course into a physics opportunity and a chemistry opportunity. And our data shows, and I don't have the numbers, but our data shows that most of our students take four sciences even without being required to do so. And all of our students contending to study science at the college level usually take more than that. I shouldn't say all unusual. Okay. So, why did we pick Earth and Space Science as our course for ninth graders? And there are a couple of reasons that really stand out, but one of the most important ones is the relevance and engagement. The opportunity to talk to ninth-grade students as they make their transition to the high school about the world they live in and issues of relevance facing our generation and their generation alike is actually one of the strongest reasons we picked that. We also looked at student readiness so that the complexity of the life science and the depth of knowledge that students have to engage with for that course really keeps it as a better placement at the 10th grade year. And the math that is really critical for physical science is better mastered in the ninth and 10th grade years, so we've shifted that physical science focus with a deeper content understanding and engineering practices to the third position. We also have more instructional materials suited for ninth grade in that content area than we do for the other materials. And the opportunities for integration. So, Scott was looking at opportunities for integrating physical science into the Earth Science course and there were easily 14 applications that we were able to directly relate to the content we'll be teaching in that course and then revisit that material as we spiral through life and physical sciences. There also is a historical preference for students in our community reaching that third and fourth science. There are some students who really value that, but many students don't perceive that as an upper-level course. So, whereas they find it much more engaging and palatable as a younger student, they're less inclined to look at that as a realistic option as they get older and they're worried that they might miss a different course offering. The new ninth-grade science integrates Earth and Space Science with all three of the other domains, so there are opportunities to integrate it heavily with physical science, engineering, and practices. And there are also opportunities to integrate it with life science as we look at issues of sustainability and carbon cycles and fossil records. So, actually, there's no domain that won't be touched upon in the ninth-grade year. The units that we've identified, and this is according to Next Generation Science Standards, are space systems, history of Earth, Earth Systems. We're pretty focused on systems and patterns in Next Generation Science Standards, weather and climate, and sustainability. And I put that there because when we're finished with the UVDs, we hope to make those public and then you'll be able to correlate what you see in a map and any family will be able to do that. You'll be able to take the UVDs and look at the units as they've been described here. And one of the really exciting things about this is that it's been a collaborative process for several years. In March 2014, the entire science department was given the opportunity to attend a workshop together and then debrief that meeting in Springfield, Vermont. In 2013 and 14, Scott and I attended a professional development course, a seminar in Next Generation Science Standards, which I think was really critical in helping us change the way we think about writing curriculum for our students. In 2013-14, Ben Lord and Matt Vetz, so a high school teacher and a middle school teacher, were organized by Lyle Holiday to work closely with K-8 teachers so that they have a resource for Next Generation Science instruction in our district. And then coming up, beginning in, beginning this week, 2015 through 17, Matt Vetz, Ben Lord, and I will begin participating in Next Generation Science instruction with an online component in order to become district and possibly Southern Vermont resources for teachers trying to provide high-quality experiences to their students as they access the new standards. What has been really exciting was that the department alone and the department in some meetings with BAMS, we're going to have more meetings with the middle school, and we hope that we can schedule these in a way that would include all of the middle schools. But we've had opportunities for a long while to sort of look at how NGSS is changing that and at the high school, we've all started using a Common Curriculum. We now have participating in our PLCs. We have several special education teachers who are participating in order to help us make sure that we get the ideas of universal design front-loaded into our curriculum so that students have access, students who learn differently and students who learn in a variety of ways have access to the new curriculum from the beginning. And we would welcome any questions, concerns that you might have.
I would just add, Michelle, that a couple of the teachers listed here have been doing work with our grade-level teams, especially the upper elementary, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers about these new standards, and that's been real helpful. In fact, the two teachers were offered the course last semester and this semester to do that, you know, and it's a nice, nice way to make their consistency in terms of those standards.
Hey, Ron. What about that course that Jake and Chris were teaching?
Yeah, that's the one you're talking about, okay.
And I, I should have put that on there, it would be a great thing to include, but the feedback that I heard about that is phenomenal. I would imagine there'll be opportunities for that kind of thing to continue. On this paper, there are some useful links, most of them are also here. There is a tremendous amount of well-organized but dense information about all of these things, but if you're interested in having a look at them, these are good resources.
Do you plan, on these standards, you don't plan on waiting another 11 years before you revisit them, do you? Or is there, I mean, science is such a changing topic. Do you plan on revisiting it every two years or three years?
Well, the thing that's really nice about this is that we'll have opportunities to revisit content within the structure that focuses on practices. So, because they shifted the focus, I think it'll be more dynamic. It'll be a program that's easier to modify and change along the way, sort of on the fly. Whenever something new happens, there'll be an opportunity to build a project or a proficiency opportunity. Yeah, so I think, I think that's true, 11 years will be longer, 15 years until 2017.
Is this using engineering and science in the same sentence, which is actually kind of new to me? Is it at the national level, is this a relatively recent direction? Because engineering always seemed like it was something way off by itself and because of our tremendous demand for engineering positions and so forth, integrating, in my opinion, is very important. That seems like the first time I've really heard of those two terms kind of link that closely together.
Yeah, the intent behind that is in recognition of the studies that show that UHS students enjoy science and they learn science, there's a big focus. There's a slightly greater focus on life science, but in terms of producing students who feel prepared for engineering, that link has gotten as diminished. We've, we've not been able to maintain our standing internationally in that area so that they've begun to look a little bit less at discrete content and a lot more at science and engineering practices together, not just as a separate class that some students will take and enroll.
Could you go over a little more of how you're going to maybe integrate with the middle schools besides BAMS or how that's going to work?
Well, we're, I'm going to defer a little bit to my administrator. We have another district meeting coming up, but because professional development for this year has been largely scheduled, I think that our hope is that we'll be focusing on scheduling for next year. There may be opportunities in the summer that would be less formal.
Yeah, as we're looking at, you know, it's easy to coordinate with BAMS because we share a campus, so it's really easy. It's a little more, it's a little more difficult to reach out to Putney and Dumbarton, but we're, you know, we did overtures and we're hoping that on the 30th of this month, we have some service time, if we can have that conversation. It really needs to happen more than just in science, it has to happen, you know, in all of our content areas because part of the Common Core is that we establish that vertical alignment as well as across the grades, you know, across content, so we've got to work on that. We've had conversations with Lyle and Ray about trying to coordinate and begin with that process more formally than we have.
Yeah, Michelle, I've got two questions. One is the integration or the, you know, the application is really good. I know at the university of, at UMass now, there are requirements of integrative experience courses that students have to take to integrate and then their certificates and community engagement, service learning, that sort of thing. How will those applications come up? Will there be anybody coming in? Will there be, you know, looking at the news? I mean, how will you, how will you accomplish that? Because there are a lot of good things that come.
That's a great question. I think that both of those are opportunities. A lot of us already look at the news and ask the question, how is this story related to evidence? Or how do you think this evidence was gathered and what is the value of it? Because we're going to a proficiency-based system, we're going to be looking at projects and opportunities that will, I think, a lot more intentionally integrate those ideas. There are links to the Next Generation site that talk about engineering and science practices that may lead to ideas. So, we're still, you know, we're, we still haven't written the plan for that, but I think getting more professionals in will be useful, but also just asking broader questions. How was the evidence used to develop this idea? That's a real big one. Also asking students to build models that would help provide a solution or fulfill a human wish. Like, you don't have to have the fastest car in the world, but if you wanted to, how would you go about doing that?
Mike, my second question is, how much of, what you're, I mean, I totally sense the enthusiasm and excitement about doing this, but, you know, how much of this is motivated by, you know, me and the Common Core? Or is it just fortunate that the Common Core and what do you think is best teacher practices that they relate to each other?
I would say that we've
Easy question.
We've known for some time that Earth and Space Sciences has been something that has been critically missing from most UHS students' education. Because traditionally, Earth and Space Sciences this year at UHS have been a junior senior elective, and so you have very few students who, you know, have actually taken that. But it's, it's possible for a student to go all the way through, you know, their high school experience and not get any Earth or Space Science. The other area where, you know, a lot of our students don't get experience in, they are on the physics, you know. So, this is something we've been talking about since, you know, the last 15 years when, you know, we, you know, saw the last major curriculum revision, you know, we identified, okay, how can we possibly address this? So, I think So I think, you know, when the Next Generation Science Standards, you know, appeared, you know, and we realized that it was time for us to revisit our curriculum, you know, that, you know, sort of does brain work and that's, you know, a good jumping off point for that.
It's good to hear. It sounds like the standards are catching up to what should be as opposed to you adjusting to meet some other goal.
I would say the science teachers see this as an opportunity to further build curriculum that they're really excited about offering and supporting students in accessing. There's a lot of enthusiasm for the work that we're doing.
That's wonderful collaboration right there.
I think so. Yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate you for seeing me.
Okay. Next item on the agenda would be consent agenda. Is there a motion accordingly?
I will be going to consent agenda.
Okay. Second, second, Ricky. All in favor?
Aye.
Oros, present. None. We are consent agenda and as always, rules are set. Finance.
It's unusual, but finance has not met since our last board meeting.
Your meeting is scheduled to have on Thursday at 8:00.
We do have one on Thursday at 8:00.
At Central Office.
At 8:00 AM.
Yes. Okay. It is unusual. Very rarely do we have a meeting there, that finance committee. Okay, how about the WSCSU Finance Committee? Last night, I forget that.
Again, the meeting met Monday, Wednesday, but it was last Wednesday, that's right. And the next meeting is not, is coming Wednesday, but the Wednesday after the 25th at 5:00. And there were two things on the agenda. One was, are we going to executive session today? So it'd be similar on negotiation issue when we rose and supported the recommendation of the administration. And we also started looking at the superintendent's review, though there are still two boards that haven't turned in their evaluations. So they'll continue with that. And then next meeting is on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you, Russ. Planning policy.
Planning policy, we met earlier this evening. I continue to be the chair. We have two matters of outstanding business. Policy F30, the people privacy rights. We had previously had first and second readings on this and we will be ready to move this forward for its final adoption hearing next meeting. We also have the dress code. We have done a lot of work already on the dress code. We have put something together and feel we are ready to bring it to the full board. So we will be wanting that for first reading for our next meeting. And all that for planning policy.
The pupil privacy, that's been through the second reading and there haven't, is there any substantive changes to that from what we last that we heard? Or is that pretty much the same?
And the pupil privacy, that would be for adoption at the next board meeting.
First reading of the dress code, which would be our first people meeting. Okay. Thank you. Teacher curriculum.
We met earlier this evening as well. I was elected again as chair of that committee. And we got an update for the administration related to the changes in the program studies at the high school for starting for next year because there's some minor changes and some more major changes and we were given an update on those changes.
Okay. Thank you. BAMS committee.
The BAMS committee met this morning at 7:45. Again, I was re-elected as chair of that committee. And based on a request, a question from Russ, we got an update around the transition of primarily the broader of town elementary school kids to the middle school and language because many of them now have had foreign, some sort of formal language, foreign language for six years and then what's that look like when they get to the middle school? And so we got a really good update and understanding about how that works and some ideas around how to continue to make the language arts, the foreign languages better, starting in the middle school. We also did a little bit of talking about open staff position in English and soon Keith will be putting out a request for someone to sit on that committee. So a few other staff things to put down.
Okay. Thank you, Ricky. WRCC. Not since the last meeting. We'll be mentioning tomorrow at the ISO regional board. Okay. All right. Anything else for consent agenda? Covered all the committees? Not, is there a motion to accept consent agenda?
So move.
Second. And Russ? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Seeing none. Consent agenda is approved and we move on to administrative reports. This time, I'm going to be very careful not to forget the alignment by starting out here.
All right. Hi, everyone. So a couple of quick updates. I don't think we met since the concert. I've been impressed since I've been here with our middle school, quality of our middle school concerts, the number of people who attend and the number of students participating. It was a fabulous concert. We had the evening concert on March 5th and then the following day, there was an assembly for just our students. And it's something I'm definitely proud of that I think is well-established here that we have a great reputation for a good music program and it's just impressive to kind of see as a relatively new person in the district. So certainly Tom and Patty should be commended and we had our student intern Josh also participated. So love with all the kids, some great soloists and really high-quality music. Just a couple of quick, you know, things that have been going on. We had a dance Friday night. Those are always entertaining and energetic and, but the kids are, you know, well-behaved and they have a lot of fun. And it's nice to get them just, you know, relaxed atmosphere, listen to music, and having fun. It's different from when I was a kid because pretty much everybody's out on the dance floor dancing. We used to kind of pack around the side. The youth risk, youth risk behavior surveys are happening this week and they happen all across the state and, you know, get some good information from those, help inform things with just what our kids are doing. We're making more detailed plans for the SBACK tests that are coming up. We're getting some draft schedules out to the staff tomorrow morning and learning more and more about the tests themselves and the technology. And this first year, I'll be really glad we get the first wave of tests over and we can just kind of figure out what any glitches are and hopefully it runs very smoothly. I have two, two short-term positions I want to update you on. We have a leave, short-term leave for the rest of the year for seventh grade social studies. So I've hired a former BAMS and BUHS student named, her name's Megan Hopkins. And she, she's worked at the Boys and Girls Club for a few years and she's been a para over at Oak Grove. And I had a very collaborative work with Jen McCusick to bring Megan over here, teaching her passion, social studies. And so she'll finish out the year in our social studies classroom and excited about that. And I don't know as much about the, we hired a peak para in the peak program, para professional. Her name's Liz Strassman and Jerry was part of that committee. She has a master's in teaching from Antioch and she's most recently taught down at Fort Rivers Charter School in Greenfield. But pretty excited about her because she has a pretty solid background in outdoor education and a lot of work outdoors, which kind of fits with some of the work that we do with that program, so.
And she's a para?
She's a para professional, yes. Yep. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Let's step back the other way.
So Tana's at work right now. So I'm not here. But the Thursday before last, we conducted our first administrative lunch of the year in the senior lounge during all three lunch periods. Fifty-five students attended as well as four administrators, including Mr. Perrin. We discussed a variety of topics. I was only able to be there for one of the periods, but we discussed the earbud policy, dress code, some of the scheduling for next year, and just any questions or concerns that any students had. We're also looking to have another one of these in the spring as well as we can plan on that. So we're looking forward to that.
Is the earbud an official policy or is it?
Yeah, we have a policy right now. Students are not allowed to have earbuds or earphones on.
It's not required.
It's a safety issue.
Handbook.
It is. Yeah, it's a safety issue. And so, you know, we're trying to figure out a way to, you know, the common one is one earbud. Yeah, so we're working through that. Yeah, because we do recognize that some students do like to listen to music. We don't want to restrict that, but in the event of a lockdown or a fire drill, we want to make sure that people can hear us. So we're trying to balance those two needs, so.
They can half-hear you. They're talking over the hall.
Is this included in classrooms as well?
Classroom, we lead up to the teacher.
Thank you, Oliver. Mr. Perrin, as long as you're on hold, that's all.
So speaking of Tana, Tana is not here because she's working, but she wasn't here last week either because she was a representative to the United States Senate Youth Program. And I have a picture and we're going to play a little game of where's Tana. I will give you a hint. She's in the, this side. You know, she reported she had a great time. One of her dreams was to meet a Supreme Court justice and she did that. She got to spend some time with Mr. Leahy. She got to spend some time, you know, she got to, you know, see the president. I don't know that they exchanged cell numbers, but, you know, she had a great, she had a great time. She talked about going to the Mayflower Hotel. She, you know, she talked about spending time in Congress and seeing what's going on in the Senate. She was positively glowing and so thank you to everyone here who supported her. It was a great honor for her. Do you mind it?
Yeah.
Good. I also have copies of her latest newsletter that went out this week. Andrew Goggins did a great job preparing the newsletter for us. And there's a lot of great information in here and important dates, a little bit about personal learning plans, a couple of things about senior awards are in there, updates from various clubs in the school. So I'll take a second and browse that. Students are turning in their course selections tomorrow as we begin to build the master schedule for 15, 16. And that process will kick into high gear beginning next week when we have students actually go to PC labs and input their course selections. From there, we'll figure out what we need in terms of student sections and we'll build our master schedule. But that process is really starting to kick off now, so we're excited about that. Last Thursday, we had parent conferences. They were well-attended. We normally get a huge rush at 3:00. We didn't get that huge rush at 3:00, but on the other end, at 7:00, there was still a lot of people here. And so, you know, we had a nice steady flow throughout that evening, so. We're starting the process with our faculty doing professional development towards proficiency-based graduation requirements. And, you know, as you recall, Keith and I and several other people in the district are attending a proficiency-based series. One of the things that we learned how to do was how to build a proficiency-based graduation, a proficiency-based rubric. And so we spent some time with half of our faculty, working with them on how to write a rubric that kind of brings out the best of proficiency practices. And we'll continue that process this week with the second half of the faculty. It's nice to be able to sink our teeth into something and begin that process. What was interesting as well is, Sean, I think you mentioned that you were troubled by the jargon. And as we were working with departments, more than one staff member said, you know, this stuff is really interesting, but we have to make sure kids can understand what we're saying. And so it was great to see that, you know, your concern was picked up right away. So one of our tasks is to rewrite that 10 proficiency guidelines in language that we can all understand and agree means the same thing. Like BAMS, we did give our youth risk behavior survey. We gave it last week. And that information is used across the state to kind of examine risk behavior that our youth undertake or in other cases, risk behavior that our youth do not undertake. And it's important to get both of those ends of the spectrum there. That is used statewide to kind of plan services and to help plan service budgets. And so that's important information. So we're eager to get the results of that soon. Like BAMS, we're also getting ready for the Smarter Balanced Assessment. Our window is from April to actually mid-March all the way to the end of the year, but because we have ATC exams and a lot of other things going on in May and June, we are going to try and do our SBACK exams the first three weeks of April, so right up until break. And so we've frantically been trying to schedule students, schedule proctors. Over the course of two weeks, students will sit for nine testing sessions. And so it's pretty intense. There's a lot going on, but if we compare it to the kneecap, it's not too much more than that actually. So, but there's a lot there. And so we're coordinating a lot of information there.
Will each student sit for nine sessions?
Each student will sit for nine sessions, so. I want to thank Ruth for agreeing to serve on the social studies department, head hiring committee, and let the board know that I will be asking for single-day commitments to hire and to sit on the committee to interview math and French teachers. And so I'll send out those dates tomorrow. And I would love to get some people to help on that committee as well.
Do you want to just clarify with Russ? Russ, it's not like the nine sessions. What we're doing is we're chunking them into smaller blocks where at the kneecap, it was set up where we tested like in longer sessions. So we have the flexibility to set them up in shorter chunks, which I think is easier, actually easier for the kids because they're not sitting there all day, you know. We're doing one-hour blocks for us because on the computer, you can log in and log out and you don't have to finish a session before you're done. I mean, so.
None of them are timed?
None of them.
They're not timed?
There's a 12-week window.
They're not timed and because it's online, if a student stops working after 20 minutes, they're safe and they can pick up where they.
So when we did it, we were timed just so that we didn't take 12 hours and 3:00?
Right. For students, it's not timed, so.
Set the bar really high. It's fast.
And after you guys finish, we decided we didn't want to time the students. No, it's not timed nationally, so. But thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Career science.
So this past Friday night, our first tax robotics team, which is part of our engineering department and Amy Anthony, the teacher, brought four students to Burlington UVM campus, Leon Ogden, Spencer Loggia, Josh Beecham, and Terrence Bates. The team registered early Saturday morning followed by a busy morning of inspections and presentation. And the late morning, their names are the Brattlebots, which they created a bot, is what it's called in that term, terminology, and they're off to their qualifying rounds. The team ranked twenty-two out of thirty-two teams across the state and a few other states in the country as well. These students are enrolled in Miss Anthony's Principles of Engineering class and I want to thank Amy Anthony for giving up a, a day and a half of her time to bring these four kids up to UVM for this great experience. Tomorrow we'll be having our spring regional advisory board meeting here in the Cusick Room, starting at twelve o'clock. And we're going to be featuring three of our programs tomorrow, which will be automotive, early childhood education, and law enforcement. And I'll also be talking about our program study changes and, and Dorn will be speaking about our tours as well that we've almost completed. It'll be this week, our last tour. Our adult spring, adult ed spring classes have begun. We have seventeen classes being offered this spring and they, the choices range from small engine, maintenance repair, introduction to computer applications, beyond beginning Spanish, and many, many more. So very exciting, large rosters for those classes. On March twenty-seventh, which is an early release for us, and on March thirtieth is our teacher professional development day, we will be wrapping up our year-long professional development series of implementing math within the Career Center programs. This is an initiative that's been part of SREV and the Technology Centers at Work collaborative that we've been participating in in the past couple of years and also a recommendation from our December tech process to visit report that we received from Technology Centers at Work from our December. I would say all of our WRCC teachers have been involved with this and two para educators are also involved with this process this year. And they have been working with SREV math consultant Marty Shigerak and he travels all the United States to schools and he is a very phenomenal math consultant for high school teachers and Career Center teachers. So very excited about this collaborative we've participated in with SREV and so thank you very much for all your support as well. And we'll, we'll have more of a detailed report on that maybe at the end of the school year.
Thank you. How about Central Office?
Yeah, I'm going to share with you a draft letter that Amy Wall from the advocacy board and supervising meeting chair drafted. With all the conversation that the State House of governance restructuring and things of that nature, Amy along with the advocacy board drafted this letter and one of the things that I'm sharing with all boards is to, to have you take a look at it and see if you'd be interested in us organizing a legislative meeting, if we get some representative down here on Monday. It might be a Monday evening, it might have to be a Monday luncheon type of thing. I think as you, as you read this document, it's really trying to reach out to the legislative delegation to have them understand the pressures that you're facing as you're developing budgets and supporting programs and also a chance for them to share some of the things that they've been working on, some of the views about these, these issues. So it's broken into two pages, a couple of sections to take a look at. I'm not sure if you'll have a sense of whether you'd be able to participate in a meeting like that. Again, it might be very difficult to schedule it with, with the legislators that we really have a lot of time other than coming home on a Monday to try and schedule something.
There was a chamber meeting this morning with the legislators and a good bunch of them showing up. I'm wondering what, what's your thoughts on timing this would be in that right now they are so heavily involved with the budget, you know, chart and all.
That's what I have to reach out to them and see if, if there's really a realistic time for them to just be back here. I don't know yet. So I thought I would share this with each board, get a sense of if you want us to pursue it, if some of you would be available and then we'll close the case to see if we can schedule something.
I think it's a logical next step. I mean, I mean, and we could wait till summer if it's convenient for them, okay? Or whenever they're off, but I think the dialogue should be open at some point.
We got a good turnout for our Carissa in the legislative one in December. And I think, I think many of the representatives kind of understood the challenges that not only in the southeast, but all of the other regional districts face. But it seems like that gets lost when they get up there and talking about these caps on spending. We just want them to remember the discussion that we had in December and how it might impact their decisions going forward.
So are you looking for us to sign this letter or this is, I mean, she says they're going to sign the letter.
Yeah, I mean, I think Amy can sign it for the whole district and see if who's. I mean, I, I, if it works in my schedule, I'd like to come to that.
And, and before the session's over because they're going to take your votes, you know.
So we'll see what we can schedule a little, sort of like dates if that's going to happen. And I have a matter for executive session.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing specific, I have four chairs at work tonight. So that concludes administrative reports and we move on to unfinished business. Is there any? Okay, new business. No new business? Okay, our next meeting will be April, Monday, April 6th. I believe we get into the issue of second April meeting once again being the Monday of April break, is that correct? I think last year we still had a meeting and that was okay with administrators. Okay. I mean, we probably, we should have a second April meeting. Which would be the twentieth, yeah. So we're playing on that. Okay. And we do have a request for executive session and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for a contractual matter.
I move to going to executive session for contractual matters.
Seventeen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?